Bye out cap for peoples at home. Is there anybody else here recording and so what affiliation?
Chris Goodra from the R. Martin.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Alright, let me jump right in. First up, we have public hearing and site plan review for Contest Analytical Laboratory 40 Spruce Street.
Start with this, not sure.
We've got something to read into the... Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the hearing room of the Town Hall 60 Center Square, December 2nd, 2014 at 6:00 PM, and the application for a site plan review submitted by Thomas Verratti, Sr., to construct a 6,000-square-foot laboratory building and an 1,800-square-foot storage building at 40 Spruce Street. Information is on file with the planning board.
Police report.
Police report. Contest Analytical Laboratory and Storage. Site location is 40 Spruce Street. Applicant is Thomas Verratti. Owner is Thomas Verratti. Security system, interior lighting, yes. Exterior lighting, yes. Alarms, yes. Recommendations, yes. It is recommended sufficient lighting should be installed to illuminate any entrances to the existing building, proposed buildings, and the proposed parking areas to reduce the potential for crime activity and improve safety for any pedestrian traffic. It is recommended to... is recommending lighting should be installed with consideration given to the residential properties to the east side of the site. Signage. Business name and address, yes. Exit and entrance driveway at 40 Spruce Street. Recommendations, yes. It is recommended the business name and the address be clearly visible at all hours in event of emergency response to the site. Traffic impact... a traffic study would not be required for this site plan for... for this site plan review. It is... let's see here, hold on. Location of exit... of entrance and exit, south side of Spruce Street at number 40 Spruce Street. Traffic volume increase, yes. Traffic volume... traffic control changes, yes. Recommendations, yes. It is recommended that the access driveway be widened to 24 feet to accommodate for two-way traffic at the site. It is recommended a center line be added in the driveway at the intersection with Spruce Street to delineate traffic lines... lanes. One more. It is recommended that an additional handicap parking space be added to adjacent to the currently proposed space to conform with local bylaws. Any additional recommendations, yes. It is recommended that a sidewalk be installed at the current facility directly across Spruce Street from the proposed sidewalk to improve pedestrian safety, especially during the winter months. I wanted to read all this. Oh, God.
You don't have to if you want to waive the reading, because Gary knows all this. It was to Gary. Here's the fire department. Read that, and then Gary can address these.
Alright, good.
You alright with that, Gary?
Love you, Gary. This is from the town of Eastside Metal Fire Department for 40 Spruce Street. The Eastside Metal Fire Department will request the following of the owners for the proposed build located at 40 Spruce Street. An addressable fire alarm panel for both main and out storage buildings. A knock box shall be installed in the interior... on the exterior of the building next to any entry doorway. All unheated storage buildings will have a heat... all unheated storage buildings will have a heat... will have heat detectors connected to the main fire panel. Fire extinguishers will be placed per fire code. Mulch of any kind will not be used around the buildings. Any other questions, please call Ben Cody, Fire Inspector, Eastside Metal.
Alright. Do you want to present your...
The DPW letter to Mr. Weiner and his response back.
But it will be part of the record, obviously.
Yeah, it's three pages long.
Good evening. My name is Gary Weiner. I'm an engineer working for Mr. Thomas Verratti, Jr., who are the project proponents and also the owners and operators of Contest Analytical Laboratories located at 39 Spruce Street. The Verrattis are proposing to construct two buildings on an existing site across the street from their current building. It's numbered 40 Spruce Street. The site currently has a single-family residence on it. It's unoccupied, and it will be turned into, if you will, storage for the Contest Laboratories. The site also has been partially cleared because of the residence, but to the rear of the parcel, you have a wooded area, lightly wooded, and a boring vegetated wetland delineated by Pioneer Environmental, soon to be known as Wetland Consultants, Inc., because of the sale of Pioneer Environmental. But the blue line indicates the wetlands is located on the southwest corner of the site, right in this area here. The bulk of the site currently is wooded in this area, and you can see the existing home that is on the site. And the sloping is pretty gradual. There's less than two feet of elevation difference on the site. As you go north off the site and towards Prospect Street, there is a steep hill and a goodly amount of grade differential that climbs up the hill. Spruce Street in this area is a private way. The public end is about 200 feet to the west of this location. What is being proposed are two buildings, a 6,000-square-foot laboratory building at the front of the parcel, at the setback that is required for the commercial zone. The single-family residence would remain in place, be used for storage, and a secondary storage building, a warehousing of 1,800 square feet, would be constructed just to the... if you will, just to the south of the existing residence. Parking requirements for the facility require 32 parking places, 34, including two handicapped, as noted and requested by the police department, would be constructed. The parking area is all to the rear and in, if you will, the southerly portion of the site. The site would be accessed by a 20-foot-wide driveway, two 10-foot travel lanes. We have spoken with the police about that, and they had recommended a 24-feet. However, due to the sideline constraints of the... and the building size, it leaves us about three feet of space between the abutter, if you will, and the property line, which we would like to use for grading purposes. The 20-foot width is the minimum that's allowed by under your parking regulations and under the zoning regulations for access to a business site. And we believe that it's certainly adequate. These are going to be employees and a few small trucks, if you will, to access the storage building at the rear. There won't be a lot of traffic, obviously, for the purposes of use of that driveway, so that the 20-feet should be more than adequate. The stormwater has been re-reviewed, and the memos in the file indicate a significant review by the Department of Public Works. We have worked back and forth, and I believe speaking with Mr. Parent just before the meeting, all issues have been resolved with the Department of Public Works, and we have amended the plans slightly to reflect the concerns that they had. Drainage, basically, is surface that, again, with the steep hill and runoff from the east of the end, that will be controlled using grass swales, which will split, if you will, and divide, bring water towards Spruce Street, and majority water would come in grass swales and go to the wetland. Where it currently goes now, we aren't changing the topography to change a watershed, so that the... we continue to accept the water off of this area and bring it to the wetland. In accordance with the Mass Regulations and also the town stormwater bylaw, peak flows are attenuated through the use of a very shallow detention basin. This is about a two... two-and-a-half foot deep detention basin. What is going to happen is with sheet flow, water will flow from the driveway. There's a high point here. Water would flow from the driveway onto the parking area, and then there's an infiltration trench, no berm, so that water flows into the infiltration trench, then fills and spills, if you will, to the detention basin for peak rate attenuation. We will be filing a notice of intent. Pioneer or Wetland Consultants, Inc. will be filing with the Conservation Commission. We certainly are within the buffer zone for the construction of the detention basin in that area. Lighting would be handled with two relatively short light poles located for the parking area. The... paved walkway to the building would be lit from wall packs and spotlighting that it currently... they're spotlighted for the number 40, but wall packs on the buildings would provide the needed illumination for anyone in traffic needing to walk at nighttime. The yellow circles here indicate the maximum one-lumen extension of the light. You can see that, basically, it's broken off for the... to the east because of the shield that would be placed along the backside of the light pole, so that the light would be directed, if you will, towards the parking area. We have landscaping to the front. We'll have mature trees placed. Also, a row of arborvitae would be planted alongside the building to the nor... or, I'm sorry, to the east of the swale that would be constructed in the future time. It would obscure, if you will, the building along that side. Those really are the highlights of what we're proposing to do. You may remember that there was some discussion about constructing additional building at the current site, 39 Spruce Street. However, with the acquisition of number 40, it offered the opportunity for a more lab space and a standalone new building that would help them in their... carrying out their work. We do have Gary Ruff from the proposed supplier of the building. These are... there's two. One is, if I can... the first sheet is the building to the 6,000 square feet, and the second sheet is the storage building that would be constructed. On the initial plans that we submitted to the board and also during the roundtable, we looked at, because of the proximity to the property line, the driveway entrance and the width, the proximity, the three feet, and the grade differential indicated that we probably would need a short retaining wall of about three feet, and that is shown on the plans that were submitted. However, in discussion, Mr. Verratti has had discussions with the abutter, Wheeler, and they are in the process, I believe, of allowing... the abutter is allowing sloping rather than the retaining wall to be constructed. There is a low area here, which really would benefit this... the abutter also by, if you will, filling to that low point. It does not negatively impact anything that would happen in the future for the abutter, but it does allow us not to have to build a wall and to provide a... basically, a three-to-one, almost four-to-one slope for the entrance driveway in... along this area here with the slope... where the grade is about three-feet differential. You happy to answer questions?
Alright, anybody want to start?
Just from this entire parcel, it was in the commercial zone, correct?
Right, correct. The house got built there, but it did once upon a time.
I'm assuming on that sheet to the right is residential property?
Yes. From this property line to the east is residential. From this property line to the west is business.
Okay. As a buffer in between the residential and that, are you planning on doing any plantings or any things?
Right.
And what type are we looking at?
Along this area here, we're planning on having arborvitae planted as a row, 13 of them from the building face or one little bit in front of the building face, past the building face. When you get towards the back in this area here, we're not doing much grading, so there's some mature trees along this line that would not be disturbed. But, basically, the buffering is to the front of the parcel. All of this area is all wooded. You can see there's a number of... there is a paper street, couple of paper streets that exist, but the existing house is probably a good 125 feet from the property line. It's currently vacant. From about the rear line of number 40 to the south is all wooded.
You talked about filling in some areas over there behind... between the parking lot of... yeah, right in there.
Yeah.
Is there any sort of written agreement or anything like that?
We're working... Mr. Verratti spoke in with the abutter.
I talked to Tom Wheeler yesterday, and he was going to send his attorney, but he didn't show up.
No, he's here.
Oh. He agreed that we could use that as a... I thought it was more than that. I thought it was a berm, but...
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, he misspoke. It's not...
It's not that severe. It's just a sloping away.
Correct.
Correct. He said berm.
Yeah, I told him a berm. Like, I thought it was going to be worse.
There's going to be a written agreement. You're going to have a written agreement?
Yes, we'll have a some sort of boundary name or agreement. So, what's going to... from the edge of the road drive, how much... so it doesn't start breaking off of the whole area?
Right. What we would look for is hold the three feet of level area, if you will, to the property line, and then there's about a three-foot elevational difference. So, a three-to-one, we would be looking to come 10 feet in, clear the brush that's along there. There's a fence, but the fence is almost 80 feet off of the property line, although we wouldn't be disturbing the fence. But about 10 feet of area from Spruce Street back, about 100 feet or so, just to make that grade transition. And, basically, it's from here, if you will, to there in terms of just dirt placed to slope down to the grade. No berm, no... it's just earth to...
So, through the chair, that will not impact Mr. Wheeler's parking lot at all since it's outside the fence?
Oh, no. Yeah, exactly.
His parking's on the other side, but he's never used that land, but there's...
I understand that. I just... I know the property fairly well, so...
Right. The fence is about eight... almost 80 feet from the property line, so we're in that brush area.
He just doesn't want to give up the way to use it itself.
Of course, understandable.
I mean, we would add him. Basically, it would be a request for construction fill easily, and it could almost go away once he sees it.
Alright, who else?
So, what you're looking at doing is basically sloping it instead of doing a retaining wall in there?
Yes. Yes. I left the retaining wall on because the agreement was not in place. DPW asked me about removing the detail, and I explained to them that until that was in place, we'd rather not remove that detail.
Makes sense.
Well, because I'd be a little concerned with a three-foot-high wall next to the driveway without doing any type of... well, I'm thinking fencing or nothing. If someone comes in and all of a sudden over a three-foot wall, eh, it's a pretty good little spill with your car. Not that anyone should be racing through there, but that's pretty close to the driveway, and the driveway is already at the minimum requirement, 20 feet instead of the 24. One other question that brings to mind. The... is there going to be a fence along the parking lot separating it from the detention basin?
We will be fencing the detention basin in its entirety.
So, you'll have something to keep somebody from driving out of the parking lot into the detention basin?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sonora?
We brought this up once before, the Bay Path situation, when we had a retention basin also in the same spot, pretty much. They came to us with a fence proposal. I had said, "Well, why don't we put up some sort of guardrail or something, because when you hit that with snow or anything, it's just going to topple over, and might be beneficial to the applicant to maybe put something of that nature, which will maybe last longer for you instead of putting a fence up." Just a thought.
My only concern is that unfenced and... more in subdivisions than heat and commercial and business, but even in this area where you have standing water, and again, this is very shallow. This pond is only this deep, if you will, but the water's going to sit there for about 16 hours, potentially, on a very good storm. That if kids decide they would... you know, they play in the background here, that the smaller kids... we're just trying to prevent that from happening, and that's all.
Alright. About the public, is anybody like to speak on this before or against? Being able to bring it back to the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, do you want to say something?
No, we just want to... our position is that's fine. We just want to subject to our...
Right.
The thing of it is, if we close the public hearing, we can't take any more information in. We did that with Bay Path, so I'd rather just have a discussion with the board first. Through the chair?
Yes, absolutely.
How close to the bottom of the detention pond is the actual groundwater height? Detention ponds are made in such a way so that it's supposed to soak back into the soil. We've seen in town where it doesn't. I mean, are we looking... has it been tested? Is it close to the groundwater height? Is it...
It is. And if you read the correspondence back and forth between DPW and myself, one of the concerns was groundwater and the fact that there's been a number of basins that are sitting to groundwater. And what we've done with this particular basin is to provide an outlet. Originally, the outlet was going to be about two-and-a-half feet up, almost to the top of the berm, to store water. And DPW was concerned, because when we did our... we did two test pits, well, actually tested, and an auger ring, groundwater's down around 36 to 40 inches or so below the existing surface, and the soils in and of themselves are poor. I mean, these are very tight, ludlow, wherum soils where they're silty loams, basically. So, that there's not a lot of infiltration that's occurring, but... and we need to have that separation of both the groundwater, so the bottom of the pond is... gives that two feet of separation. But in addition, what we've done is we've lowered the outlet to the bottom elevation of the pond, so it doesn't pour water. When we did that, we had to enlarge the basin more for storage capability and capacity, but in doing that, we're now going to have a dry bottom basin, because you're going to have a continuous outlet, if you will, out of that basin at the lower end. So, if you get... if the groundwater table rises enough and we get our storms, and where you're seeing in some places in town, you wish outstanding water, in this case, it will drain. It will drain for the top of the storm.
Going to throw it out there, because it's me. Knowing the groundwater height and all, wouldn't it have made more sense to do an impervious pavement under the parking area to where...
A pervious pavement?
A pervious pavement to where the water drains into there. It looks the same size as the detention basin plus your three feet higher. You've got a lot more drainage and all that way.
Right, but if... one of the concerns in that with the pervious pavement is obviously cost. It is extremely expensive to do and do correctly, and that wasn't the only consideration, but certainly plays into... if we have the capability of storing water in an open basin and not impacting having a wet bottom, then I would move with that. I mean, we moved in that direction. As I say, pervious pavement is probably about four to five times as expensive as regular paving. And, you know, it certainly is an option when... if we had... we're constricted by land, then we might have to deal with that, but we did not.
For the square footage of the building, what was the required parking? I mean, is this...
Thirty-two spaces required. We have 34.
I mean, I'm just thinking down the road, any expansion in here, you're going to need additional parking. Where the detention basin area would have given you additional parking area if you did all the...
And maybe if that happens, you may have to go to a pervious pavement for the additional parking in order to make it all come together.
Crosswalk across Spruce Street, I know...
We did put it in. Originally, we talked about its location, and we settled on it. There's currently an existing island there that has two trees. That will be cut, and this turned into a... basically, tried to direct people to come through here. The amount of foot traffic, I think, is going to be extremely minimal, but we will... we do have this in this location here. And that lines up, if you will, to the doorway, but again...
But it also looks like it lines up right in the middle of...
The driveway.
The driveway.
Right, but we've been talking, you know, over in this location is also driveway. This is actually driveway for the others. And frankly, the main entrance now to Contest number 39 is on the side of the building or to the back of the building. This is really, when I was there, just storage. We have extremely low traffic on Spruce. We're already looking for a path, like you said. And then, so there's no car traffic there. Where's people crossing there? Should be five or six people at that age, because that last space doesn't require a lot of staff. It's going to be good light traffic.
Through the chair still?
Yep.
I just know that you would come back, come to us before looking for additional parking. And if you're looking for additional parking, then I'm assuming if these buildings don't need a lot, they're going to park down and in here, which will give you a lot more foot traffic going across the street. I think that's a reasonable...
They have to come back with a whole different plan down there, but this is the plan now. You know, if you're hoping for several years to...
Sort of predict the future.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, I mean, they were looking for additional parking, so this seems to solve that problem. I wouldn't assume that these buildings are going to... even though you are required 32 spots, it seems like a storage building isn't going to require that many people in it.
It's... the Eastside Metal Park requirements are inflexible for use. We don't actually think we're going to use the parking lot for that at all. We have enough spaces in there already to fill whatever we need for that building. But like you said, we got to do what we got to do. We got to put the spots in.
Can we grasp them?
Okay, and fence around it. I was just making sure the dumpster was fenced in.
And also, straight shot.
I did see that. Was there any other concerns? I know we waived the reading from DPW that jumped out.
The concern was the pavement with... I think the lack of traffic does meet the requirements regardless. I can't see them going to 24. I don't think that makes any sense at all.
No, right up until the end of the day, DPW's been talking with Gary and everything according to Dan and Bob. Everything's been met.
Okay. That's the only thing that's still to me, and I don't really see a problem with that.
With Rick, it wasn't a requirement. It was just a recommendation.
Right, I understand.
Whoops. Let me see. Could be. Let me see, could be. Previous board member. I'm all set for right now.
Want to close the public hearing? We've got a motion made, or you want to leave it up for discussion, or?
Is there any other?
I think we're.
You're keeping George's motion to close?
No, no.
Yeah, I moved it.
That's what I'm saying.
I didn't withdraw it. We didn't vote on it, so we can still discuss, but.
Okay. All right, so we're not voting on this tonight, it's just a discussion, or we are voting on this tonight?
You can vote on it.
We can vote on it, like I said, I think.
Add input later.
No, what it was is if we closed the public hearing.
Right.
And there was any other information that needed to be brought in to DPW or whatever, we wouldn't have been able to at that point.
But we don't need any more information.
So we do have a motion made to close the public hearing?
I will second the meeting. I'll second the motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a motion to approve site plan as presented.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, you're all set, thank you very much for coming and presenting that.
Pending, the written application from Lee Butter.
Thank you. Sorry, I got myself.
Steve Rimmer, Lee Butter.
Thank you. Thank you. So you want to come sit here, it's so much easier. Good night, thank you very much. Next up is our six fifteen, request for signage for Coyotes Den, one eighty-two Benton Drive.
Town application, sign permit application for Coyotes Den, self-storage, jail of play. Street address is one eighty-two Benton Drive, East Almeado. Near intersection is Industrial Drive, Benton Drive. Square footage of proposed sign is ninety-three square feet, it is single-faced, it is attached to the building. Projection of any is five feet, setback in property line is seventy feet. Total number of existing signs, oh, I'm sorry, proposed sign is permanent. Total number of existing signs is three, total square footage of existing signs is ninety-three square feet. Total square foot of proposed signs and existing signs, ninety-three square feet. We have a picture of the sign here.
No, that's not it, it's just the signed guy.
Okay, yeah.
I think there's more.
This isn't yet, another copy here.
Yeah. Wait a minute, that's the existing, I think. Yeah, that's the existing. Here we go.
Hold on a second.
All right, so, what are we doing here?
I've been told that, that you people are under the belief that this sign was never properly permitted seventeen years ago, is that correct?
To support on the evidence, to support on, yes, that is correct.
In order to believe that, this is what had to have happened, okay? In nineteen ninety-six, when I went, we, I built this in three phases. In nineteen ninety-six, when I went before the planning board for the first phase of this project, now I don't think I need to tell you guys that part of the site plan review, there's a lot to do with signage, probably about a third of the site plan review has to do with signs.
Not necessarily, you know, we just had a site plan review that had nothing to do with signs.
Well, in a project like this, signage is all over the site plan review.
Signage and site plan review are actually two different things. Sign permit, yes, it may be a part of it, but they are actually in essence two separate.
Right, but it's part of the site plan review, is it not?
It isn't, it isn't. If you got a site plan review and a site plan review was approved, you would still have to come for a sign permit.
Right.
Okay.
You go before the planning board, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the planning board in nineteen ninety-six totally ignored the sign, okay? Then we built it, then we got our billing permit and rebuilt it, put up a sign there. So if we showed what wasn't, if we had an as-built and then we didn't build that as-built, why didn't the building inspector say something's wrong?
That I can't.
Okay, this is what had to have happened in order for you to believe Robin McDonald, okay? The building, the planning board in nineteen ninety-six screwed up, they didn't take up, they didn't take up the sign. The building permit, the billing inspector, when he gave me the CO in nineteen ninety-six, or in, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-seven, the summer of nineteen ninety-seven, didn't catch it. I don't know how that could be. Two years later, I go before a second site plan review to build the second phase. So the second planning board totally screws up and doesn't take them to the sign. The sign has no, the sign's been up there now for two years. So the second planning board doesn't mention it, doesn't, doesn't realize that the sign is not properly permitted, gives me a site, gives me the billing permit and I get a certificate of occupancy about six months later, and that billing inspector doesn't catch it, okay? So now you have two planning boards and two times for a billing inspector. Now we go to one more, a third site plan review, okay? Third site plan review on this property. Again, the same sign, sign has been there for now five years, doesn't come up, if you're to believe Robin McDonald, okay? And get a certificate, or get my billing permit and then I get my certificate of occupancy. So you have three planning boards and three billing inspectors looking at this property, right? So you have three planning boards and actually it was two billing inspectors. Okay, now you have a second billing inspector, so now you have, that was built, the thing was finished in two thousand and one. So now thirteen years later, we have a different billing inspector. What has ever been done about him, okay? Exactly, nothing. So in order to believe Robin McDonald, three billing, three separate planning boards screwed up and three separate billing inspectors, inspections screwed up. Now what is the common thread in those three billing, three planning boards? There's one common thread amongst them all, that's Director Robin with a Y. She's the common thread. She was the director then, as she is now. If she can't find the paperwork, whose problem is that? Now, do you believe three planning boards screwed up? I want, you do. Three, okay.
If a sign permit was granted to the applicant, then the applicant should have a copy of that sign permit.
And we should have one on record.
Yeah.
But you should have a copy of the sign permit.
Seventeen years later, I should have a copy of that sign permit?
Sure.
Okay, but I don't, I don't, I don't think that's reasonable again, but let me ask you, one of the persons on that planning board was a lady by the name of Marilyn Richards. Do you know her? Isn't she currently working on or maybe has just completed an overlay or, you know, working on all the new sign regulations?
She's on the bylaw review committee and now working on a sign bylaw.
Well, I was in here one day when she was doing it this summer.
Okay.
Okay? So I think signs and hair are very near and dear to her. So you're telling me she had nothing to say about the sign that went up on that building seventeen years ago?
You're asking me to think for three of the boards that I can't.
Exactly, no, what I'm asking you is the preponderance of the evidence. Three planning boards took, took, gave me three separate, I took, three separate site plan reviews, three separate billing permits, three separate certificates of occupancy.
Okay, well, I've gone through all the history of all your site plans and nowhere and anywhere is there any sign applications, nor there any sign.
Listen, I can't, I can't help that. You, I can't help that. That sign has been up for seventeen years.
So what you're asking this board to do is?
Through the chair, may I? I don't believe we're here for your existing sign. It's been up, I don't know how it got put up, I don't know anything about that, I've only been on the board, this is my third year. I think what we're here for is an application for a new sign going up.
To replace the one that's been up for seventeen years?
I mean, I'm under the understanding now that this is a new sign that you want to put up and we have a sign request, a sign permit, and this is what we should do with it. I don't know what happened in the past, I don't think any other board members.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was told, okay, that I put up that sign illegally. That's what I've been told, okay? I hired a Leary company out of Southampton to do that. They've been in existence for seventy-five years, so you're telling me they didn't do things properly?
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I don't know what happened, I don't think the board members know what happened. I think we're here.
I can tell you what happened.
For a sign.
Robin McDonald doesn't keep the paperwork.
Roth is right, Roth is right, we're here to approve a new sign. What happened in the past has happened in the past, but that's not for this board to discuss right now, right now, but before, it's a new sign that you're proposing, correct? So let's stick to that.
Well, we can stick to that, but it's the one and the same. Because I'm replacing, I'm not putting up a new sign, I'm repairing the old sign, I'm taking one down, putting the one back up. It's exactly, statute's limitations are ten years anyway.
Again, you were, that's, if you want, such limitations, if you, for argument's sake, if we deny the sign, you can take it to the Board of Appeals and you can, you can take the argument up with them. But right now, what's in front of us is a new sign application and/or replacement sign application. So I understand where you're coming from, you have to understand where we're coming from too, we still have a job to do.
Exactly, and so did the other three planning boards.
Right.
But you, you guys are so much smarter than that, right?
I'm not saying we are or are not, all I'm saying is we have a job to do, we're going to do it to the best of our abilities presented with the bylaws that we have.
And I'm sure the other three planning boards did the exact same thing.
Well, I've been on the other side of this table, just like you've been, on the planning board, and they have made mistakes, nobody's perfect, everybody tries to do their best. So if a mistake was made once, twice, three times, I don't know, I can't answer those questions, but it is possible. Unlikely?
Is it possible Robin McDonald lost the paperwork?
That's possible too.
Thank you.
I'm not saying it's not impossible.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we, can we avoid personal attacks here?
No, because I think I'm being personally attacked. I've been told, I've been told that I built this, I built a facility illegally and I have an illegal sign, that's what it's been told.
No one has attacked you personal.
That's personal.
No, it's not.
How is it not? Coyotes Den was built with my money, with my sweat and my labor.
Fine.
Okay, that's personal to me.
And that's great, and you're a great businessman in this town, we appreciate your taxes and we appreciate.
You know how much taxes I paid to this town?
We appreciate your contribution to the town.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Fine.
Yeah.
We're talking here about signs, let's talk about the sign, let's not talk about who did what to whom thirteen years ago.
Seventeen.
Whenever. Let's talk about sign and the process for getting the new sign permit and whether or not proposed sign meets the requirements by law.
Let me ask you, George, does it, do you think it takes six months to get a sign permit?
No.
Neither do I.
If someone comes in with a proper, proper sign that meets the requirements, it goes through the next meeting.
Is that what happened here?
When did you file for the?
It was in August.
It was brought up through the chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Your sign permit was brought up. We referred it to the zoning enforcement officer to try and get his opinion on whether or not it meets the criteria.
And what happened?
To this date, he still has not replied. I believe it's eight weeks now?
It's been longer than that, August.
We've sent multiple letters, we've sent a letter to, I believe, the liaison for him, the Board of Selectmen, and for some reason, they, even though it's the zoning enforcement officer who should be making a decision when we ask for it, a determination on the bylaw, he has not. We've no determinations from him. I think we have to go forwards as a board, make a decision, one way or another for you.
One year of letter that's been written, I think you've seen it.
I haven't seen it.
All right, this is the letter from this board, the building inspector. Planning board received an application for signage for Coyotes Den.
Oh, that letter.
You've read that, you've heard that.
What was the date of that letter?
September twenty-fourth, this is October. This is just another request, so this has been the third that I know of.
And that's two.
That's three in the last month.
That's two.
Plus the initial one.
The dysfunctionality of this town and this government is not my problem.
I agree with you on that one, but right now, we're going to, we're going to act on the sign that's been presented to us tonight. So, everybody seen the sign, everybody?
That's the proposed, the photo of the existing. It looks to me, looking at this, that the proposed sign is larger than the existing sign.
And the existing sign is what, two hundred and, two hundred and, what's the existing sign?
It's supposed to be the same, we just took off the round to put a little gable on it to make it change the look a little bit, but if we got to put the round part on, put it back?
It was a square foot? What square foot is supposed to be?
One hundred.
Yeah, it can't exceed one hundred square feet. Actually, it can't exceed one hundred square feet, it's five percent of the front of the main building. Can't exceed five percent of the front of the main building and in no case can it be more than one hundred square feet.
So the front of the building is?
And what's a square foot of your proposed sign?
Ninety-three feet, I believe.
No.
Well, that's.
If it's not measured right.
Well, what is the correct measurement on it?
It's written on there.
Two hundred and ninety-one square feet. So the sign is at, you're almost three hundred feet.
I, 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 there's obviously a discrepancy in how you guys are measuring it, so that the existing sign is three hundred square feet.
Feet above.
Yeah.
It's also, it projects more than five feet above the building, limited to seven feet, I mean, it's five feet, you've got seven feet above the building. It, it, it doesn't meet any of the criteria that's laid out in the bylaw. And I'm just talking about facts here.
I told him to replace the sign, if he's got, if he's got something a little different, the sign guy's got to adjust it, I told him to keep everything exactly the same, except put the gable there, just to change up the look a little bit rather than the round part.
The gable increases the size.
All right, so we're over on the five percent, we're over on the square footage, and what's the other one, over five feet?
Over, the projection above the building.
Are all those things over on the existing sign?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's, it's irrelevant because had your limitations, you had ten years to correct this problem.
The, the way it works is, if you have a pre-existing non-conforming sign, you can maintain it. If you replace it, you have to conform.
I know how it works, George, thank you for the advice.
That's the rule.
I've got plenty of counsel on it.
Fine, I'm just, that's the way we do it.
All right, we have an application for a sign.
But I, I wanted to know, so where was the, these rules were in place seventeen years ago.
Yes, they were.
So what happened? What happened with?
I wasn't here, I don't know what happened.
I wasn't here either, I don't know.
Huh?
I wasn't here either. I can only go through the past history and look it up. There's no building permit for any signs, there's no, there's no application for any signs through the planning board.
Well, then you need to look to this woman right here, and where are they?
Can we, can we?
Let's, let's, let's not. All right, we got a motion for a new sign. Can I get a motion for the sign?
So make a motion, your motion to approve?
All right, motion in the affirmative, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So if you don't agree to our decision, you're more than welcome to take it up to the Board of Appeals. All right, start at the top, work our way down.
Got any other paperwork, term?
There are those copies of the letters.
All the letters.
And you need all back in here. And the mail to the sign guy.
Which way? Sorry.
All right, release of bond at Full Betterly Lane subdivision.
Betterly Lane subdivision, excuse me, was taken at town meeting and the taking document has been recorded with the Hampton County Registry of Deeds. The one issue that was, that you had questioned was whether or not the trees had been there for a year. According to subdivision, trees have to be, live a whole planting season. They were completed in May of two thousand and thirteen, so this is ready to go.
Obviously DPW has signed up on it.
Yes.
Do I sign this book or?
Or Beddley Lane subdivision.
Vice Chair, and then, um-
I'll second the motion.
Ralph can-
Discussion?
Cross out Tide's name for me, Ralph, and sign.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
No, I was happy, I talked to Mr. Perrin, and just said, everything seems good.
And the same thing is for Wisteria Lane.
Do we need to vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next up, we have release of bond at Full Wisteria Lane.
I'm sorry. Yep. Same thing applies.
Make a motion to approve the release of bond at Full for Wisteria Lane. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Partial release of bond at Bella Vista subdivision.
Bella Vista is the subdivision that's off of Process. It's not completed yet, and they are looking to have their bond released in partial. DPW has inspected, agreed, and we are giving back eight thousand four hundred and fifty-two cents.
So DPW will lose anyway, so-
And we're still holding five on that.
You wanna make a motion, or?
We'll make a motion to partial release of bond for the, what was read?
Bella Vista. Bella Vista.
Bella Vista, and the amount- and the amount proposed.
Thank you, and DPW's calculations are attached.
She made seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, and the same thing goes for Winterberry. Winterberry is off of Porter Road and, um, what's that?
Oh, yes, I know.
That used to be Juniper, thank you.
Is that a Juniper lane?
From the board, you've been down there?
Um, and this one, we are releasing-
I have not been- I have not been down there.
Winterberry? He's just about finished it.
The drainage system was fascinating.
Fifty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents is being released. It's about half the bond that we're holding.
Make a motion to partial release, the amount stated. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's do- Jump around a little bit here. Let's do a request for signage. Trey Olive? Well, I figure we'll get through the easy stuff and then we'll take our time and talk about what we need to talk about.
Business name is Trey Olive. Business owners, names are Joe and Michael Maruca. Third to twenty-fourth Stonehill Road. Property owner's address, property owner is Ralph Zepke. Proposed sign is sixteen square feet, single-sided. It is attached to the building. It is a permanent sign. And, that's about it, non-eliminated.
You provided a waiver of site plan a couple of weeks ago.
Sign's very simple.
And it needs a requirement, excuse me, for the business district.
Alright, any discussion? It meets all the criteria?
Yeah, it meets the criteria, and by the way, this, they have now converted this into a storefront, looks really good.
Awesome.
They're working real hard on it.
It's beautiful.
I really hope they see-
Sorry, George. With the customer.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Same side of the building, right.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve? Sign for Trey Olive, why don't you shake a rope?
Still moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, another request for sign, Forest Air Smith Funeral Home, two-twenty North Main Street.
They're just changing it up. Yep. Same size, uh, no changes.
Company name is Forest Air Smith Funeral Home and Prematory Services. Street address is two-twenty North Main Street. Square footage of proposed sign is twelve and a half square feet, is that right? It's attached to the building, it's single-faced. It's a permanent sign. Total notice sign is two, total square foot of existing signs is thirty-one point five. Total square feet of proposed sign and existing signs is fifty-one. I think that's it.
It's replacement of the area contract.
Yes, they're just changing it up a little bit.
Refreshing. Awesome, refreshing sign. Same size, same number.
Discussion?
Looks good. Make a motion to approve the sign permit for Wisteria Smith? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Request for waiver of site plan review for Cloud Nine Marketing Group, three oh two Summers Road.
Property owner is Wayne and Evelyn Pilon. Owner's address is three twenty- three oh two Summers Road. Name of proposed business is Cloud Nine Marketing Group. Owner of business is Dion, no Dylan, Pilon. Owner's business- business owner's address is three oh two Summers Road. Property address is three oh two Summers Road. Property District, Assemblyman A. Oh, there's a waiver, sorry. Summary of business operation, provide marketing solutions to local businesses, including content creation, copyrighting, SEO, campaign design, general marketing strategies. The house is just for phone and email only, no clients at a home, no commercial vehicles, no signage.
Home office?
Pretty much.
Yes.
Marketing solutions to local businesses. Uh, yes. Any questions? Comment suggestions?
Make a motion to approve the waiver of site plan review, contingent upon our twenty percent and other criteria as stated in the zoning bylaw.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request for signage for Big Y.
Um, that's- that's not on the agenda, the- the Big Y was determined, and I spoke with Dan Hillier today with regard to this, it really wasn't a sign. If you remember, there's two towers at Big Y. One says Big Y first class or world-class. They were only able to put a sign in one of those towers, because you can only have one sign on the building. So they put an American flag in the other one. This was years ago. The flag has since apparently been reversed, it was- it's backwards for some reason. I never noticed it, to tell you the truth. And it's been faded and everything, so what they were doing was just replacing it with a graphic. So, it's really not a sign, it was that, but I did talk to Dan Hillier and he agreed with me, so that's off the menu, I almost said. Off the agenda.
Do you want a request for waiver of site plan then, for Health Track Fitness and Wellness, forty-five Crane Avenue?
Little letter here from Health Tracks. Dear Planning Board, we, Health Track Fitness and Wellness, are requesting a waiver of site plan review in order to have a two-foot diameter satellite dish installed by Dish Network. The dish will be installed and the location is hidden from plain view of the front end side of the building. We have permission from the property owner, Falcon Retail Properties, to install the dish. Norman A. Brenner, Jr., physical plant director.
This is basically just charters moving out, or I forget who East Long Meadow has, but they're switching out.
No, we actually have charter.
And it's switching out to Comcast. So this is just a two-foot in diameter, not visible from the ground.
So, we're going to permit me to send waiver of site?
It's basically the same as before, they just, you know- I think he drew a picture of it.
And it's only two-foot diameter?
Yeah.
When it was first mentioned, I had visions of a six-foot dish on the top.
I think only a couple of minutes on that big one.
Yeah, they're not even that big.
One of mine was.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Alright, motion made in second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, let's do the elevator, square footage for construction improvements for town hall.
The question that I've been asked to present to you is from the building. And if they go forward with this project, as you know, the town is not exempt from its own bylaws and any additional square footage, regardless of whether or not there's going to be employees using it or not, you have to add a parking place. So, any additional square footage. Now, what they're planning on doing is for ADA purposes, because apparently the threshold will be met by the other, um, construction that they're planning on doing or improvements, should I say. They're just looking for you to say, yes, you agree that an elevator is ADA required and will not require an additional parking space. Let's see what they come to you for. Or if you don't agree, then you say no.
I'm just gonna ask a stupid question, why is it brought in front of us?
I'm not gonna, I think it's a stupid question, do anything ADA, I- I just-
Because, well, no.
Should it be done this way?
Um, no, because it's site plan. And the town hall is under special permit.
Okay, so what they're actually asking is, it's not whether the elevator is required or not. What they're asking is whether the square footage of the elevator is exempt from the parking requirement because it's an ADA-required, um, facility, okay? Okay, so what they're asking is whether we would agree with that statement, that they will not need another parking place, because the elevator, in fact, is exempt from the square footage requirement.
And that you have to understand, this is under special permit, that's why it's come to you, not a building.
Thank you.
Well, and elevator's obviously just gonna, you know, hold the general public in order of disloyal, so even if it did violate that, that logic, I would vote against it, just because, you know, this movement doesn't have an elevator, just really need one to whether there's an extra parking spot or not to go with it, so.
Yeah. It's gonna ask for a foot of the building?
Only the size of the elevator.
My- my- the only thing I would like to add, though, is in our comment, we should mention to them that they need to check the side yard setback.
They will when they- because they're gonna have to file for an amendment to the special permit, anyway.
Right, but I think we should highlight that to them, that we are not approving, um, any exemption from-
Oh, no, 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 uh-uh, right, right.
Right, I think what George was saying before, everybody gets ahead of themselves, let's not lose sight of, you know, what we need to keep in sight.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, that's the only thing that they were asking. And I mean, it's still not a- it still has to go before town meeting, anyway, so.
Yeah, I understand that.
So that's basically what they're saying.
Alright, so I would agree with their assessment.
And again, as far as ADA compliance, I think they would go through our ADA enforcement officer on whether it's required for ADA compliance. Does it need another parking spot? I would tend to agree, if we needed it for ADA, no.
Right.
It's- an elevator is not an occupied space, so it's just a convenience, it's not-
Right, but-
It's not not-
Our zoning bylaw doesn't talk about occupied space or unoccupied space.
I understand that.
It simply says square footage.
Look, in the essence of general safety.
Yeah.
Let's stick with that for now.
Yeah.
Alright, I think we should stick to that. Do you need a motion, or are we just?
Um, no, just an agreement, a basic agreement, you all agree?
Yeah. Alright, it's approval of DPW to use money from Fenway Lane for street improvements.
Yes, as you know, Fenway Lane, the board, a couple of weeks ago, I voted to, excuse me, initiate the procedure of taking the eight thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and six cents that was left in a subdivision to, um, put in a separate account to hold an escrow to use to repair the roadway. The developer was given an additional thirty days to complete the punch list, and we didn't hear from him. So, according to Attorney Dunnehue, what he needs the board to do is to authorize the Department of Public Works to do the work or to contract out to have the work performed, and provide the planning board with invoices for the drawdown of the funds to be taken. And then he's going to request that the DPW take the same vote, and then what will happen is, they will make the road as, using this money, make the road as best they can, and then take it at next town meeting. They do not have to have the road taken first, because they're not going to be expending any municipal funds. This is strictly funds that were held on behalf of the developer.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
George, your comments from-
Yeah, I think Robin distributed my comments back to PBPC regarding the land use priority planning mapping, twenty-fourteen for East Long Meadow. I didn't hear from any of you folks, so I incorporated Robin's comments. There were two errors in the original one. I quoted chapter sixty when I should have quoted chapter sixty-one. And we had- I had said that something was age restricted, but it wasn't. Other than that, I added in, to the best of my ability, a listing of the parcels that are owned by the tenant, in one way or another, so that they have a list of municipally-owned parcels, that they don't consider those to be privately owned. And also, you saw the list of priority development and priority protection parcels that I put together in that memo. And I sent it in on the twenty-sixth, it was received, you know, and I got an email back from them today saying, thank you for putting this in. I want you to be aware of this, this is something that, once it's finalized, the state departments that control development money and protection money are going to look at when or if there's any request for funds for development or protection. So that, for instance, should a farmer want to go for an APR, okay, we need to have, make sure that that farmland is listed as priority for protection, so that the state will approve, give them an edge up in getting it approved by the state. And I tried to do that with the list of parcels that I put together. Again, it was just comments to them whether or not they actually make any changes in the mapping, I don't know. My major objection was that they mapped a large part of the already developed part of the town as priority for redevelopment, without any input from the town, opposition to current town zoning, and in opposition to what has been expressed by town meeting with regard to zoning. So I asked them to remove that priority for redevelopment. When they say priority for redevelopment, what they're talking about is infill and multi-use, multifamily housing, and multi-use buildings, where you have retail and residential together. All of which has been rejected by every time we've gone to town meeting. So I- I really object to them coming in and saying, no, we're gonna make that a priority for you, when the town has not set it as a priority. And I just wanted to make the point to them in writing, that, you know, we differ from them in our opinion of that. Hopefully, they will accept it, I can't guarantee it, but, anyway, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And if you have any thoughts on it, now that we've talked about it in public, you know, let me know, there's still a window to alter what I put together. But, you know, that's where it stands.
And I have the map that George is talking about upstairs, maybe whatever he put up. I know Ralph, you did.
I thought the map was interesting. I guess that's the best way I could word it. Like, priority development, a lot of it centered around the center of town, which is fully developed and privately owned.
Yeah.
And already too congested.
And priority land for conservation had a lot of our already conservation land in it.
Oh, yeah, they really- Oh yeah, they had really strange stuff, like St. Luke's Church, priority for development.
Yes.
The Elms condominiums, priority for development. They're developed people. I'm sorry. You know.
That's interesting.
What, what, what it comes from is they do this based on aerial photography with no boots on the ground. The people that do this have never been to East Long Meadow. Okay, and...
They certainly think I'm an authority.
Yeah.
They never will.
Anyway, they probably see more, you know, little cameras than what you could on the ground.
Probably, at this day and age. All right, last one. I'll link to a discussion regarding the open space and recreation plan. I know we touched on this a little bit the last meeting. I think we announced it with Ralph Arzar.
That's what I heard.
That's what I was.
But not to use the PVPC grant money?
Right. I think that's what we basically agree on. And, I mean, just so that the board realizes that it's not one person. It's gonna be multiple departments. It'll have to be the rec department in on it. Robin will have to be doing quite a bit of that. You want to get conservation in on it? Conservation, absolutely.
I think the last committee had, what, twelve people in?
Yeah.
Because we had outside people too.
Yeah, we, we had somebody from the, there's at least one independent recreation support group in town that, you know, has, has been active on and off over the years.
The Friends of Recreation?
Not, not called Friends of Recreation. It's East Long Meadow Recreation Boosters or something like that.
Oh, all right.
Caffey, what it is.
Are they still in operation?
Uh, they get together now and then. It depends on how much energy they have or how, how bad the crisis on the playing fields is.
I know Colin is really...
Yeah.
But, excuse me, involved in, I'm, I'm sure he'd be willing.
Yeah, you know, so it, it's whoever you think has, or the stakeholders in, in a plan like this ought to be, if not included on the committee, at least consulted, you know. I think that would be our next step, is try and put a committee together. Like I said, this is more going towards grant money. You can't receive grant money unless you have the open space and rec plan and up-to-date one. And there is a lot of grant money out there for doing walking trails, for doing recreational stuff. If we could tap into any of that, it would be great for the town. As we know, our budget's been extremely tight the last few years.
Last time we put in a grant money, did we get anything? I listened, you said it was like a generator. I know.
Well, we did, we did with, we did with Aglam when we paired with Aglam, but East Long Meadow got the short end of the stick with that. Aglam got most of it. What monies were received, unfortunately, we don't receive any information on it, how it was spent, when it was, whether the work is being done or not. I mean, we just don't hear anything. And what it was, was if you remember, you, you made a, you chose an area in the town and we did a circular for people to have their homes fixed.
Right.
And I don't know whether any of that work has been done at all. What I do know that's in the process is Dan is working with the ADA, with the state ADA to do the town building ADA plan. And all that is though, is to say, okay, this is what you need. I mean,
Right.
It's not doing anything and the money is going, you know, for that. But whether the money from the block grant was ever used, whether any of the properties were improved, I have no idea. And here we are, heading into winter and it, you know, one of the big things was bad whoops for the people that couldn't afford to do it on their own, so.
Good. What I would suggest is either contact the state or the, if you haven't done this already, PVPC, to get the current format that, that they require, because it has to be in a very specific format.
For the open space?
Open space plan. And they changed it again. The last time I done...
They change it all the time, so you can't use the last one.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, anything else before we adjourn?
Uh, yes, just one more thing. Winterberry Lane subdivision contract is up December fifteenth or so. And I just, this is just a renewal of that until they're finished, so, Michael, I just need you, if you wouldn't mind, to sign that and then I will have Matt Campaneri sign it. Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to?
Nope. More discussion? Do we need a motion on?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Further discussion? The board had talked quite a while ago about subdivisions and sidewalks. And if we would consider in lieu of them putting in the sidewalks, taking money to use elsewhere.
Yeah, Connie Wasbicki wants to come before the board to talk.
And that's exactly. I told him I would bring it up. He would like to come and talk to us about it.
I've got it.
Hold that thought for a second. I was, I was...
I apologize for that.
Gonna get a motion.
The contract, right? Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't realize we needed a motion.
Make a motion to renew the contract.
Extension of the contract.
I would second that motion.
George?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Apology.
Nope, okay, I just, you, I was, my train of thought was not where you was, okay.
And I've got, I've got Connie Wasbicki scheduled for January thirteenth.
I just think it's something that, before someone comes in, I did a little research. It's not, I can't find it in our zoning bylaws anywhere. I believe it's under our subdivision rules and regulations.
It is.
Which I know Connie had mentioned doing a petitioned article.
You didn't have to.
And I said, well, I said, there's nothing in the zoning bylaw to change. I said it's under subdivision rules and regulations.
When did you talk to him? Because I talked to him this afternoon.
At Capitol Planning last night.
Oh, all right, because I was gonna say this is a whole...
I brought this up and everybody was kind of against it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. That's what I told him.
I'm, I'm still for it, so, you know.
I knew it was, I knew Sandra was against it and I couldn't remember George's...
I was against it.
Yeah.
I was with you because I...
I knew you were for it, Michael, but I, I couldn't remember.
I would think it would be something to look at on a case-by-case, subdivision by subdivision.
Well, that's a little subjective though.
Yeah.
Well, I think you would still have to...
The problem.
Only because if a subdivision's going in and there's walks going in front of it on the main street, you want walks going into that subdivision. But yet if a subdivision is going in on the south end of town where in fifty years, the DPW will not get there with walks?
Right, and Bella Vista is, is a perfect example. We're looking at twenty-five hundred feet of road. Twenty-five feet of road, no access to sidewalks, no plan of sidewalks getting to Bella Vista.
And I have the, I found in the archives and had, had actually Frank Morandi printed up a new one for me. I have the sidewalk plan. Remember the sidewalk plan that we had ten, fifteen years ago and where it's proposed and everything?
The proposal was the whole town.
The, the thing is, is the seventy-five thousand dollars that, I mean, yeah, yeah, seventy-five thousand dollars that go in every year. We have nineteen thousand left from last year. So...
Don't do it. Okay, don't.
Yeah, every, every year it goes in and it's supposed to be for sidewalks, but this year...
The whole thing with that seventy-five thousand, which I mentioned was, that's voluntary for appropriations, the capital to put it in and recommend it. There's nothing in writing that says that they have to put that in.
Oh, no, no. There was a, there was a resident in town that wanted that and it was approved many, many years ago and every year at town meeting, it, it's just re-approved and re-approved.
Well, from what I understand, she was gonna bring it, she had brought a petition forward for five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And the town said, but if we...
That was like forty years ago.
Say seventy-five thousand a year will be put into it. And obviously they didn't spend it all last year, so.
No, they didn't.
And so Connie Wasbicki wants to come before us and talk about that?
Yes.
And I think that would be great.
I've scheduled him for January.
It's good, cool.
All right. Anything else before we?
Nothing else. The minutes, did you receive your minutes? Because no one responded.
I, I got them. I, I wrote mine up and then I, I did not get them mailed in and then Friday...
That's why I don't have any. Right.
I do have some issues with minutes that I'd love to talk to you about.
With what?
With the different minutes.
All right, so we're not ready to address this tonight?
No, I don't, I don't have any anyway because Donna said that she doesn't have any of the changes.
Think that's it, gentlemen?
Motion adjourned. Second.
Hang on, Scott.
The props all set?
All set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.